Everybody, today is October the 15th, 2020. And you are very fortunate to be able to connect with us on the world wide web. We're doing everything different virtually because of COVID. But one of the things that we're doing the same is engaging in some level of professional development, learning about not only the academic work of the board and the district, but also the structural work, the work that we do on our buildings. This should be actually a pretty interesting meeting because it is going to be run by, or chaired by, if you will, a guy by the name of Mike Schmidt, who works for our superintendent, Leslie Myers Small. But his job, I'm sorry, Mike, if I'm not doing a perfect job of explaining this, to make sure our buildings are a place where our students can be safely and effectively educated. And so Mike's going to describe what's called the capital improvement plan for the district. So without further ado, Madam Superintendent, I'm just going to give the mic and the floor to Mike Schmidt. Is that all right?
Wonderful. Go for it, Mike.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, President White, for the kind words. I think just a brief recognition for my team, especially the facilities team tonight, led by Tom Case, Joe Griffin, Eric Hanson, Todd Bruce, and many other, many other folks that worked tireless hours, not only on the capital side of things, but also on all of our maintenance and custodial and all those efforts. So and they've been integral in putting this presentation together this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay. My hope is that you can see. The, can you see that title slide? All right. So with that, I think just as a first, as a first thought, you know, our capital improvement program, we've talked quite a bit over the last, my almost, almost 10 years here with the district. You quite often, almost at every single board meeting, we, we have some sort of a resolution or a conversation around some aspect of our capital improvement program. And it's really kind of the, keeps the trains running, so to speak internally. It's a way that we can do required large maintenance projects and receive our 98% reimbursement from the state of New York. So, and it is different from the facility modernization program in a sense that it's targeted work that's based upon a building condition survey that's done every five years with the state of New York. And with that, they target specific projects in every single building that, you know, a district should, should choose to select. And then from that, we work our projects from there. So this, the idea tonight, just kind of walk you through at somewhat of a high level to show you where, not only where, how the process works, but also where the Board of Education, where it intersects with the Board of Education business. So with that, I'm going to. So, make sure I go. Why is that not? Well, forgive me, wrong layer. Okay. So the goals and objectives of this program certainly are four. One, to provide an overview of our planning and approval process for the annual CIP program. Why don't make sure we have an understanding of that? Because oftentimes where you weigh in on these projects as a Board of Education member is really important. Illustrate what your specific involvement is, as I said, where it intersects with your business. Identify where the required board approvals are, is that those specific critical points? Be able to, be able to discuss change orders, which we quite often discuss that at board meetings, whether it's a specific conversation around a change order or just a general conversation about why one would even occur. As I said, capital instruction, capital construction is an investment in our infrastructure. By the city council's ordinance, we can only do capital work internally in regards to items that are health and safety, infrastructure related. So we don't do work that is, you know, classroom renovations or anything like that. It's all based upon those and it's all, it all must be connected back to the building condition survey that is put up by this day, as I mentioned earlier, and finally be tied into the, to the goals of the superintendent and the Board of Education. So the, in essence, that's why it's so important for us to be on the same page in terms of the planning and the execution of these. Most recently, you've seen the capital, the capital improvement program. You approved it in your 2020, 2021 budget in, in May. And then it was revised in June after we had a project approval at the end of May. So this is the most recent version of it, the cover sheet. And like I said, this is an investment where we receive 98% reimbursement. It's one of the few things in the state of New York where we almost do the work, almost at no local shared cost. So a capital improvement program timeline is anywhere from 30 to 36 months. As I said, it begins with a five-year capital improvement, our building condition survey, and then we track it through all the way to the end of, ends with approval of the contractor's final payments. And as I said, there's many steps along the way where you'll, where you'll see this. And you're also going to see where it intersects. So this chart really briefly outlines just a straight line from beginning to end. But then the next several times we're going to walk, we're going to show you where, how we, how our operations really conduct all these many different steps simultaneously. So there's real, there's really three areas here in terms of critical tasks. One is the planning, what's the level of funding, what are our special initiatives? And then that, actually that project selection. The second piece is our design and our construct, our design and construction. That's led by Eric Hanson, Todd Bruce, and their team over at our design group. They, and here we're talking about approval of consultants, our seekers. If there's, that we don't need those in every project, where there's a possible environmental impact, we, you approve the seekers for those, our contract awards, and then our final payments. And then finally, the financial management, which is our bond resolutions, our project awards, and then any particular change order that may come about. And once again, if you have a question along the way, please don't hesitate to ask as we go through this. This, once again, we're using, I'm going to use a 2021 CIP as our, kind of our guidance. So, and when I say 2021, that's the work that we're going to be doing next summer. Okay? So from September to March of, of 20, okay? You're going to, you're going to, excuse me. So turn them out to 2020, develop the 2021 CIP. It's going to, we are starting to do this now, the planning for that begins. So September to March, we're, you know, we're identifying items in the building condition survey. We're working with school principals, we're working with, you know, chiefs and deputy superintendents and other stakeholders within the, within the, within the school district to identify those. And we're also coordinating projects wherever possible with the city of Rochester. We've seen those with community centers and our playground renovations over at adjacent number 20 school and items like that. April, May, and June, are you, while you're deliberating your budget, we're doing our final, final touches on our CIP program. And that first area where you approve the projects is in your annual budget approval, which is in April or, I'm sorry, which is in May. So that's when you're going to approve that first set. That's the first time you would see it. And really, I think what I recommend here is if you have concerns about a project selection, there's a time that we really want to have that more in-depth conversation on those particular items. So you'll first see it in April, and then ultimately in May, you'll, you'll have, be able to deliberate on that, follow up and ask questions. There's time to change, but you'll see, once we approve in May, then we go and, now you start awarding contracts to consultants, architects, engineers that are going to start the development of this project. Now we start spending money. Okay? So ultimately here, once we award these contracts, we are committed to doing the design work for whatever, whatever those projects are in the, in the, in the appropriate CIP area. I see Commissioner Powell's hand. That, it's a hand raised, correct? That's not a.
It is. So the point I wanted to make here is that more times than not, in the, in the budget adoption process, the capital improvement plan comes to us very, very late. And to your point about this is, that being the time to ask questions, we need to figure out how administratively to structure it so that we get that, that capital improvement plan early enough in our budget process that we can ask intelligent questions.
I think that's a great point. I can certainly work with Carleen and the superintendent to have that at the, whenever the appropriate time, the board would like to see it. If it's a little bit earlier than normal, then we certainly can, can work our schedule back for that. And that's not, that's not an issue. And that's a great point. Because the longer you have to deliberate, the more we can make some adjustments on the front end of it. All right. Now I'm not seeing any other hands. So, so once I said, the first task is here, the next task in this year was in, we did the awards, if you remember, we did them at the May meeting. We did at the end of May. We also did some in June and July, but that was the, one of the first awards that we had, once again. For this is for work that's going to be done next summer. July, August, and September, you're going to be doing, we're doing the other different approvals internally, are working with our consultants, architects, engineers, and wherever a seeker is required, you'll also see that resolution come before you. And that, we only do those in areas that have an environmental impact possibility. So we, like any, any area where we're going to do a parking lot renovation or an entryway renovation, where we may have an exterior part and an interior part, those are the areas we would, may, may be required to have a seeker. So the final part where you see the, the 2021 CIP is when we go for our bond resolution. Now, this is very appropriate that we're doing tonight. So I'm very happy that Kelly selected us to go first in your professional development. Because in November, you're going to see the, the bond authorization letter for your approval. So we'll review it at our November finance committee meeting. And then it'll come to you as a resolution in November. And then ultimately, city council, with your approval, of course, city council will then approve in December so that we can begin the process of awarding, hiring the, awarding contracts to the contractors and getting things up and running. Because in this, especially in this environment, in terms of securing resources, a lot of the supply chains have been interrupted with COVID. So the sooner we can get out in front of that, the better our chances are of getting projects done on time and certainly on or under budget. Ironically, now you can see some of the overlap here at the bottom. Or in this October, this September, October, and November, as we're bringing the final bond request for the summer of 21, we're now planning the summer of 22. So we got our teams kind of working in, in three different areas. And I'll get to the third area in a moment, but you see how this calendar begins to overlap. So now we're into, this would be now January of 21, right? We're just finishing out 20 with, let's assume that you approve it, city council approves it. We're going to come back with awards of contracts for the summer of 21 work. Those generally come in March. So you'll, if you remember through our budget deliberations, you'll all quite often be at the podium or on the Zoom, you know, talking about whatever the awards might be at those particular contracts. So once again, this is the next time you'll see it on the award of those contracts. We cannot award anything without your approval. And that, those contract awards generally go March, April, and possibly even into May. Like I said, we really clean up that timeline by a December approval. If you remember, we did not get our approval for this, this 2020 CIP. It didn't actually go through until, I believe it went through in January. We had some things obviously going on internally here in December of 19. So I believe it went through in January, or if not, early February. So the later it goes, the more it kind of throws off our timeline in terms of getting our construction oriented. Contracts are awarded, and then, you know, June, July, and August, we're all hands on deck and we're doing anywhere between 16 to 20 projects across the city. And, you know, we're, you know, we basically start July 1st, and we close these out more or less by mid-September, although we don't miss an opening of school. So whatever we do, we have things ready to go for the opening of school. And then we may be just cleaning up some loose ends into September and October. And now you see, we're actually now, we would now be starting to plan the summer of 23 CIP. So you can see how the timeline kind of overlaps. So our crew in our, in our design group are, you know, there, there's never, there's never a, kind of a downtime or an off-season, so to speak. You're always engaged in one area or the other. The final phase, the final part of a, of a summer in 2021 CIP would be at the start of 22. So you're going to see summer of 21 contracts. Now I'm in January, February, and March of, of 22. You're going to see again, final payments for those. And in fact, there's three coming to the board in, in our business meeting in October. This, this will kind of, I'm sorry, I'm getting one step ahead of myself. These will be your change orders. Most of your change orders will come in here and be processed. And then you'll have our final payments. I got one step ahead of myself, my apologies. So you can see here, change orders are processed, contracts are filed, final payments, even some final payments in here. But generally, your final payments come in this area. And then we're submitting final cost reports to SED so we can get the 98% reimbursement. And you can see that's the, we're going to get our reimbursement basically about 18 months after the projects are completed. And that reimbursement really falls on us in terms of how quickly we can close out a job. So not all of them fall into this timetable. Sometimes there's, you know, contractor disputes, things that kind of, kind of hit, hit or miss on some of these. But in general, we hit this timeline with about an 85 to 90% regularity. This chart here, and it's a little, I apologize, it's a little big for the screen, but the, this really shows you, you know, how these things overlap. So 19, your months are on the top, year one, year two, and year three. And you can kind of see where each, each CI, each CIP cycle, the general overlap is not in the summer, where people would kind of think it would be, where you're kind, it's not really the summer, it's more in the fall, where you really are intensely planning for the next year. You're actually getting your bond request ready for this, the current, the upcoming CIP, and you're closing out jobs from the past summer CIP. So there's, that, that is, right now is an incredibly busy time for us in, in that. And ironically, it does fall in line with everything that we're doing for opening schools and making buildings ready and other items. So the, the, the level of intensity on Hudson Ave for those three months is, is very high because of the nature of different things that are, that are coming at us. And once again, the team is incredible. The, probably the most, I think probably the most telling tale of this is that very rarely will, you know, will the superintendent get a call about a project that's late or, you know, something along those lines, because everything is done on time and on budget. And that color scheme just kind of tells you what I just went through in pretty good detail.
Mike, it looks like Commissioner Adams has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see you, everyone. I mean, I don't have all my, hold on one minute. My apologies, Commissioner Adams.
That was, oh, question four or five slides back. I really wanted to know, maybe I just didn't hear you say what SECR is.
A seeker is an environmental impact study. And the, most of the jobs that have an outside portion of a project, a roofing job, for example, we're required to do seekers in those areas. And it basically does the job have a negative impact on the, on the neighborhood? The most recent one that we really had a lot of conversation around, most of them are pretty straightforward. There isn't an environmental impact. The most recent one that we did were the lights at Wilson Foundation's field several years ago. And we actually had to lower those lights because it was, it was, it was too much light on the neighborhood when they were up for, for games and so forth. So we actually have those lights on a, on a, in a way to up, raise them and lower them. So it's just basically to identify if there's an impact. It gives public comment, so it's a, it's a required area. But our jobs, our jobs, for the most part, don't have that because they're really contained within the building campus. And very rarely do we extend ourselves out, for example, put a new parking lot in or something like that. Generally, it's paving an additional, existing parking lot, something along those lines.
Thanks, Mike.
My apologies for overlooking your, your question. All right. So in our, and once again, this kind of just shows you, you know, generally, you're going to have about 50, 50 to 60 resolutions, depending on the number of projects that you're going to see come before you. So the more projects, obviously, the more resolutions that are going to kind of, going to come before you. And you can see basically, the, the pace of play here is pretty consistent across every month. You're going to see basically a resolution involving CIP more often than not in every single month that you're, that you're serving as a board member. So just in recap, you're going to approve the CIP in your annual budget. You're going to make an approval when we award consultant contracts. You're going to approve the, us to go out for a seeker. You're going to approve the bond authorization. And then you're going to approve the awarding of the construction projects. So going back to our 2021 CIP process, you've done one, two, and three. We're now on step four, where the bond authorization letter will come to the finance committee in November. You will hopefully approve it in, in your November business meeting. It'll go to council and, city council in December. And then we'll be off and running on getting construction preparation in January. So we start on time. Quite often, we have questions around MWVE participation. And I wanted to, sometimes this can, when you're at the, at the dais or on the Zoom, it sometimes can, you know, I'm not so sure we always have an accurate picture of where this, where this kind of fits in. So once again, as Kelly and I discussed earlier today, this, this PowerPoint and any subsequent backup information that you would like will be there for you in perpetuity. So you can always refer back to it if you have a particular question as you're reviewing a resolution or a change order or whatnot. But this, this chart basically identifies the minimum participation we need for each area of contracts that we award. This is, we, this is a, we file this same chart in conjunction with the city. So, and these are the benchmarks that we have to hit. We hold contractors accountable to hitting those benchmarks. Very, very rarely does a contractor not hit one of these MWVE benchmarks. In fact, my team in the design group will exhaust those options. If somebody needs a variance, then it must be signed off by me. And, and subsequently, we work with the legal department on that as well. But that's the, that's the, that's the backup to that. So we just don't take their word for it by any means. And like I said, most of the contractors that we're dealing with hit our MWVE requirements. I think our, probably our most challenging one is in the area of plumbing. We don't have a lot of MWVE plumbing contractors in the city of Rochester. So that's the one area where we're consistently struggling. But for example, our GC, Steve General, is one of the, one of our larger companies here in Rochester who do a lot of GC work for us, and they're in MWVE. So that's kind of where that fits in. And this chart is there for your reference as well.
Mike, the, one of the objectives of the facilities modernization plan was to expand on the number of MWVE
Yes.
providers. Has it become easier to find those contractors since the FMP began?
Absolutely. The Business Opportunity Program is, I think, what you're referring to. And that's, that's run by Seven, the, the program manager. And they, we basically take through about 20 firms each semester. And they go through a 15, I think it's a 15 or 18 week training program. It's a weekly, it's weekly sessions of professional development from everything from how to bid a job to how to, you know, work within change order processes and everything else in between. We actually also accept businesses that may not naturally be attached to a, to a, a capital program or, or the modernization program. That could be, we have a, we have a photography company that, that went through the process and is a viable MWVE company now moving forward. So the reason, one of the results and why that's been so successful is that now when we go to, when, not only us, but when my colleague Norm Jones in the city, we go to look for companies that are MWVE companies, we now have a much larger pool with which to select from. And that's a direct result of the success of that program. And I, I, forgive me, I didn't bring that data with me tonight. But I've got to believe, we're now in the fourth or fifth year. We've got to be anywhere, probably about 160 firms that have gone through the Business Opportunity Program in the last four years. It's about 20, 20 firms a semester, plus or minus. Was that a new hand, Commissioner?
Actually, it was. It was kind of a comment on this, on this table. The percentages on this table were set based, many, many years ago, before I was even on the board, based on the number of MWVE providers that were in the, the local marketplace when the policy was created by the city. And then we adopted it, an exact copy replica of what the city passed for themselves. I'm thinking, I'm wondering if the number of providers as a percentage of the whole has increased to the point where we want to study this again and potentially up the percentages.
I, I wouldn't, I certainly would not see any reason not to, not to look at that again. This is obviously, as you said, been, was adopted many years ago. So going back and revisiting it based on the success of the program and other, you know, other companies that have come into town and the amount of construction work that's going on in the city of Rochester over, just over the last 12 months, we really exploded in opportunities for, for firms and companies to do business. So I do think it would be an appropriate time to revisit that. And I, with the superintendent's permission, I could certainly start the conversation and see. I wasn't here when the, when it was adopted, so I'm going to have to educate myself a little bit on the process. But certainly willing to take that lead on that, with Leslie's permission.
At, at the risk of varying my colleagues in minutia, one of the issues in, in the course of the last 20 years, you know, we've wanted to update this policy, in part because the policy required it. There, there was a, there was a clause in the policy that said it had to be reviewed after 10 years. And one of the reasons it was not is that the number of MWVE providers had actually gone Um, and one of the reasons it was not is that the number of MWVE providers had actually gone down during the Pataki years because he didn't provide a mechanism for MWVE contractors to get certified. Um, and there was no support in the community. But if FMP and its, and its, um, mission has been successful, then, uh, and, and that, that decline in MWVE providers has, has turned around, now would be an excellent time to, to recalculate.
Yeah, I, I would not argue that at all. I think it, I think it makes total, total sense. And I think even if you, even on the 10-year evaluation period, you, we've got to be within, within the year or so of a new 10-year evaluation part of it. So there's no reason why we wouldn't do that. Okay, I'm going to move on. Okay, the other area that we certainly have a conversation, put a few conversations around is, uh, and I wish Commissioner Shepard were still here. Hopefully she's watching because we put this in for her. The change order process and once again, just right for everyone's benefit, the change order is a written instrument signed by the owner, contractor, and architect after execution of, of the original contract stating their agreement upon all the following. A change in the work, a change in the contract sum, or a change, if any, in the contract time. Any one of those areas requires us to do an actual change order. In a sense, the types of change order that really are, the basic are, are two. You know, we have unforeseen conditions in the workplace. They kind of fall in line with maybe an Arizona omission that, that from the architect or an engineer, and then owner requests. So I'm going to lump them in terms of two instead of three, only because we, ninety-nine percent of what we do in terms of change orders falls under the first item. You know, the unforeseen areas are the, I use quite often the example of asbestos. Uh, but there's certainly other areas, a found condition, maybe a subfloor isn't, is, won't be able to. Uh, most recent, we had one at School 44 because the, the subfloor under the gym was just not able to, to hold the new gym floor. And we didn't want to put a new gym floor on a bad base. So replacing that base was the first thing we had to do and then put the new gym floor. That was, that required a change order. Um, so Arizona omission probably are, like, like I said, they're, they're not frequent, but they're certainly in there. And then owner requests. I can only think of one owner request in my ten years here, or nine and almost ten years here of doing this. So they're obviously very infrequent. It was actually at School 42. And we had, we changed an entrance way for the single point of entry. If you know, if you're familiar with School 42, the original thought was to have it on the, on the playground side of the building. And we moved it to the front where the bus loop is. So that was, that was the last one that I can remember. But those are the three types of change orders. All right. So I, once again, I won't, I'm going to go through this a little bit more carefully. So a required change order, work that is necessary to continue the construction without interruption to meet the schedule. This work is not optional and typically is the result of unknown or unforeseen conditions. The discretionary change order, which is the lower percentage, is additional work that would provide an enhancement of the delivered project, but was not previously planned for or included in the original budget. If we were doing a roofing job and we found more parts of the roof that were damaged or, excuse me, needed to be replaced, that would not be a discretionary change order. All right. So adding scope of work where you find a condition that you can't look the other way from. Like I said, once a contractor gets, delves into something and they find more problems, they're not allowed just to walk away from it. So we have to address whatever it might be. And the discretionary is pretty self-explanatory. How do we, how do we approve these? So each contract.
One second, um, Mike. It looks like Ricardo has a question about that last slide.
Yeah, yeah, Mike. So when, on this last screen, could you go back right there where it says, um, the change order? So when you say it was, it was included in the original budget, does that in, does this have anything to do with the bid? I mean, can I give you a lower bid and then come back and, and use a change order as a process of, um, probably, um, resulting in a higher bid? Um, you know what I'm saying?
No, and here's the reason why. Because when a contractor bids a job, they're basing that bid on what we design as a scope of work. They won't have generally, if we, for example, if we knew there was asbestos in an area, then that would be part of the bid document. So generally, you know, when we do our test, we find another area that didn't come up in our test. So a contractor wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be able to, to, to lower a bid because they suspected something would be in there. And so I think that's the most, most, I think that's the best example for that. Um, I'm not saying it could never happen, but I, you know, generally we haven't seen that as a frequency. And, you know, like I said, our change orders are relatively small in comparison to the projects that we're doing. So, you know, the cost benefit analysis there really wouldn't come into play for the, for the dollar figures that we're actually talking about on each individual project. Remember, it's probably eighteen million dollars total. But you're talking about eighteen projects that are less than, than a million dollars. And that, that million dollars is divided amongst several different contractors, the GC, the plumbing, HVAC, and whatever. So, you know, I don't think that would be, I don't think it'd really be a viable strategy for a company to embark upon. Not only that, it'll also get them in trouble in a lot of, in some other areas too.
So one last thing, and I'll let you go. Earlier, you had mentioned something, there was something said that some change orders are reimbursable.
They all are.
Oh, okay.
Everything is reimbursable. It's part, it's part of the project. Well, before we have anything, before we put a shovel in the ground, the project is approved by state ed. So when you see a change order, that is part of the approved project and the, and is eligible for full reimbursement.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's a good answer. All right.
The, I, one point of clarity, the only time that it would not be eligible for, for full reimbursement is, um, what they would consider to be a luxury. We decide we want to add a weight room. A weight room isn't eligible for full reimbursement. So us adding a weight room to a job because we think it's a good idea for kids, we would have to, it would not come back as a full reimbursement at ninety-eight percent. Since we don't do that in our jobs, that's a really kind of an outlier example. But, um, but generally ninety-nine point nine percent of them get ninety-eight percent reimbursement. Now, I think Commissioner Adams, you were also referring to as a built into the budget, and the answer would be yes. So we build a ten percent contingency into each project. Okay, so, and with that, that accommodates any possible change order that we could come, come across. And because we borrow the money in full, if for some reason, once again, rarely happens, but if for some reason, project one goes a little bit over their contingent, over their budget and over their contingency, we're able to shift money from project nineteen, which is way under budget and will never touch their contingency to cover that cost. So what, what that means is we never go above the money that we borrowed. So we're allowed to maneuver money a little bit internally at very, very, I would say, doesn't happen frequently, but what we can't do is we can't go above the money you authorize for us to borrow. All right. And going back to that change order, once again, all that is eligible for reimbursement. Commissioner Powell, I'm getting good, by the way, with this hand raising. I just want to give myself a little bit of.
You are, you're on top.
I tell you, I got a big future.
So.
Mike, Mike, you can take my job if you want.
Well, you notice I struggled early, so it's not anywhere, I, I, I certainly feel your pain on this one.
So, um, on the point of borrowing the full amount, including the contingency, um, some of my colleagues will remember, not the most recently elected ones, but a couple of years back, we, um, we had accumulated this excess, uh, borrowed funds, uh, in an account. And not, because we never met the, the maximum of our contingency, those borrowed funds stayed held in an account with the city. And, um, we finally, after some years of accumulating, negotiated with the city that they could release several million dollars for a very specific, uh, capital improvement project. Is that right?
Uh, that's correct. In fact, the turf fields that we have, um, at Franklin and Wilson were, were the result of, and East, excuse me, were the result of, uh, of those contingency dollars being repurposed into a project.
And that makes sense because the state would have considered those, um, luxury items, wouldn't they?
Yeah, they would not be aided at ninety-eight percent. They would receive some aid because you're replacing an existing field and a bleacher system and, and so forth, but not at the full, the full ninety-eight percent. So that's where we can be really strategic about something we want to do. You know, and, and I think athletics has been the example here a couple of times. But we also could say we want to do, uh, some renovation of our CTE labs at, you know, one of our high schools other than Edison and East. So that would be another area that we certainly could put that money toward, or doing pre-K classrooms at a particular building. It, it really kind of depends on, on, and I'm talking about classroom renovations, not actually adding the bathroom, so to speak, because that's, that would fall under health and safety. So I think the most important thing is to be strategic about it. And once again, we still have to come back to the board for those approvals. We can't decide on our own that we want to just go put the money and do something here. We have to come back and display what we're going to do and where that funding comes from. So that kind of falls back into those different approval spots along the way. So you have some internal controls and we, I, we have reviewed this with Dr. Jallow and, and Carleen, Ms. Pierce, excuse me, uh, about three weeks ago or about a month ago now. So, you know, our internal controls around the contingency, um, anything under ten percent, our, our director of facilities, Tom Case, can, can authorize that. Anything that exceeds ten percent must have Tom Case's sign off and mine. Now, I'm trying to think, we do, these do come, I would say not, I wouldn't use the word frequently. We probably have four or five during any one particular session that comes in. Remember, we're not over our, our, we don't go over the actual dollar figure because we could, we will shift money to cover that cost in that particular project. And remember, these are discovered conditions. So the most, the greatest example right now is our gym floor at number forty-four. The subbase just wasn't going to work. You can't put a new floor over a bad base. That was going to go over the ten percent contingency. So I approve that and we shift money from another job to finish that particular piece of work. So that's just the most recent example that we would have. Anything more than that, all right, any discretionary, any percent, any amount must come to me as well. They can, no one can approve a discretionary change order in this operation without my approval as well. Um, and, you know, and from, and once again, now I don't do this in a vacuum either. I should make sure I frame this. I also consult with the superintendent on, on those items. And we make a deliberation as, on that as well. Not so much the ten percents that are, we, we have to do, but anything else that would be considered discretionary, that doesn't happen without a full conversation with myself, the superintendent. And I would, like I said, I only can think of one of these. And, and that one, and on School 42, we actually consulted with the board and we brought that back for approval because the change order was so large. And that was, oh my gosh, that'd be about eight, eight years ago now. And then any change order that exceeds twenty percent and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars requires board approval and, or deputy superintendent and superintendent. Our practice has been board approval on those. You get all the change orders in a quarterly report. They list the change orders by project and by the contractor. So now you're going to have a better sense of how they break themselves out. The documentation for projects and the additional scope, the contracts with the change order summary and the summary by contract. And then it's identified in the final payment resolution that you approve as well. So there's nothing here. I mean, it's a, I, I, I would say it's the one area of our organization that you have probably the most direct oversight at multiple levels. And I've been listening, you know, I've been here long enough to know that there's different frustrations at different times about, you know, when we, when we're involved in the process and when we're not. This is the one area where you have this level of oversight and all the data available, available to you at any particular time, plus access to me for a follow-up question. And nothing gets done without the approval of state ed. You know, we must have that in order to get the reimbursement. So you have the internal review, you have multiple times where you see the projects and approve them. You have the, the award approvals, you have the bond resolution approval. You, uh, you, and then any type of a larger change order, you have that approval. So you do put a little bit of trust in me as your, as your chief operating officer, but I only get the, uh, a little bit over the ten percent contingency. That's about as far as I can go, um, in terms of my level of, of discretion on this. So, uh, you know, though, I really wanted to focus on that area because I know quite often it's a question. Commissioner Adams, I really appreciate your two on this because, um, my, my hope is that you won't not ask, ask questions at a board meeting. I really want you to continue to do that. But also, when you see some of these come across your, uh, in your, in your resolution packets, you'll be able to actually tie the language to the resolution because, you know, you, you're dealing with so many different areas that, you know, for you to be an expert in, in what a, a GC does or what a plumbing contractor does, or how a change order actually works and have that right at your fingertips really is, is really not probably fair based on all the different areas that you're overseeing within the district. So my hope is a, is a resource and I really like you to keep referring to it. I want you to ask questions. Um, you know, we are, uh, we, I, we welcome them. I'm, I'm, I'm available and certainly my team is always also available. You, I, all of you, I think, know Tom Case. He's been with us thirty-seven years. Um, Eric Hansen, uh, well over, well over twenty years. I know Eric is listening. I don't have his exact years of service as our project architect. The other thing I want to note is everybody who works in Eric's shop in the design group, all their salaries are ninety-eight percent reimbursed. So your, your reimbursement from A to Z on this, not only the projects, but any personnel that's tied to that, has either a portion of their salary or all of their salary tied into, uh, the capital work and, and reimbursed at ninety-eight percent. All of that is completely legal with the state education department. Um, in fact, they, they encourage us to make sure that we maximize all of our costs in that area. Um, in fact, uh, Ms. Pearson and I were talking earlier today about making sure that we're maximizing every aid possibility. So that'll be one of the areas that we certainly will look at, um, to make sure that we don't have any, you know, any other person that we may have, maybe they'll tie some of their salary to it to get those reimbursed. So, um, and like I said, I, I'm, I have the pleasure of speaking this evening, but it's, uh, there's an incredible team behind it that puts all this together. If you have a desire to have a one-on-one presentation, to go and visit the shop, to go look at how they do business, you're more than welcome. I know Commissioner Adams joined us with Commissioner LeBron, um, for one particular visit. But if you want to go more in depth and go and see, you know, from, go to a job site and see how it connects back to the plans. I mean, we, we would love to have you. We've got a couple right now that we're out there finishing up. So that's, uh, um, so, you know, we, like I said, we want to be completely transparent and be at your, at your accessibility. So, so with that, I conclude my, my presentation. Above average. I just try to, I just try to be a little bit above average every day.
There you go. That's all we can do.
And under an hour too, by the way.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive. Are there any other questions or comments regarding Mike's presentation? Let me look at my participant list. Uh, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Uh, well, thank you, Mike, again for that presentation. I hope, I hope, uh, other people in the community were listening because it really was an opportunity to learn how that system, how that system operates, uh, because not only do board members need to know, but the, the layperson does. Because it's their tax dollars at work. It's their, those are the buildings that their children go into. And kudos to you, Mike, for explaining it in such a way that anybody, a board member, a parent, an engineer, uh, could understand it. I, I, I truly think that people will appreciate that presentation straightforward. Well, if there's no further questions for Mr. Schmidt, did I hear some, oh, yes, Commissioner Powell? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Uh, something just, you know, um, as the, as a board of directors on NISBA, I hear that many school districts around the state miss their, their, uh, was it SA four, their, their state deadline for reimbursement? And the states process when you miss a deadline is that you go to the end of the line and you sometimes have to wait fifteen, twenty years for that reimbursement. To my knowledge, we have never missed a deadline. Is that right, uh, Mr. Schmidt?
That's correct.
Wow.
I wanted to call it out because that, that's a really big accomplishment. I mean, um, the state does not provide a large enough fund to adequately pay off these late submissions. So the list of, the, the end of the line that I just described gets further and further away every year. So, um, it's really important that all districts, uh, meet the deadlines. And because of the sheer size of our reimbursement requests, we can't afford to miss those deadlines. And I want to give kudos not just to Mike, to Tom and Paul and everyone else who have, plays a role in our, um, facilities, uh, capital improvement projects.
Amen to that. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Any other comments or questions? All right. I don't see any. I see a. I see someone applauding what you just said, Commissioner Powell. So kudos to you. All right, well, seeing the fact, seeing that there are no further questions or comments regarding Mr. Schmidt's presentation, there is nothing, no further business for the Board of Education. I'm told by my clerk that there weren't any issues that had to go to executive sessions. Is that correct, Madam Superintendent?
Correct.
Yep, all right, well, that's good news too. So that means this is going to be a pretty short evening, informative, but short. What I will require now is just someone to make a motion to adjourn and we'll be done.
So move.
Whoa, everybody was just dying to make that. I ain't never seen people move so quickly to adjourn a meeting. I'll take it from Commissioner Adams and seconded by Commissioner Malloy. All who's in favor indicate their desire to go home by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Oh.
Oh, oh, oh.
That was Callia.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Hey, I'm sorry, we can't go home just yet, even though we adjourned the meeting. We have to take that poll that we've referenced frequently, folks in Rochester. We, we try to get better every day, I think, as Mike said. I think that was the phrase that Mike used, every day in what we do. And one of the ways we do that is we do a poll. So what you'll see is board members answering questions on an electronic poll before we actually adjourn the meeting.
Like getting graded in real time.
Yeah, yeah. More like a pop quiz.
Um, one of those questions was key performance areas. Could, Callia, could you send a key performance areas summary to us all, just so that? I'm answering yes, but to be honest, I don't recall what all those areas are.
Well, I am waiting on those from the superintendent. So Superintendent Meyer Small, if you are still on there, can you please send those over when, whenever you send over your goals?
Sure, will do.
The other thing, since we're, we're talking about this, and Callia, when you sort of sent us the summary, what it, you know, during the course of any given meeting, we could have several leaders of the meeting. And I don't know if everybody has ever wondered, well, wait a second, which, I think it's question number nine or 10. It says, did the leader, da, 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 assesses the leader of the meeting's performance, sort of? But in many of our meetings, we have multiple leaders. You know, we pass the baton from person to person. So I don't know, has anybody thought about whether that question is accurate or not? Or will it be misleading? Just a quick thought.
What I do is when there's multiple chairpersons and presenters, zip, is if one of them deserves a no, everybody gets a no.
Okay, I see.
But so far, that's not been a problem.
All right.
It looks like for, for Zoom polls, we can only have 10 questions in total anyway. So I would need to find a way to, to get that, that otherwise.
Good night, everyone.
All right, yep. Good night, everybody.
Ricardo's not shy, he's like
Why are we still hanging around here?